All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 26th, 2025, meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are in attendance. Dr. Brand will be joining us shortly via phone. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First up, we have our Wilmington Middle School Student Representatives, Eliana Goldstein and Nyla Chimwanda. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hello, I am Nyla Chimwanda.
And I'm Eliana Goldstein.
We are both eighth grade students at Wilmington Middle School.
And we are going to talk on the behalf of the Wilmington Middle School.
We'll first begin with the after-school sports program run by Ms. Simpson and Ms. DeSanto.
The after-school sports club has many exciting activities that members are currently partaking in. Some of these include-
Pickleball, soccer, basketball, and many other fun activities.
In physical education class, the current pickleball unit has just finished.
This unit was a blast.
The next event is the basketball unit in honor of March Madness.
Also, ski club just started.
They ski at the Neshoba Valley Mountain where they can challenge themselves to difficult trails and do jumps on the train park.
The robotics club run by Dr. Ron Shetty, or as we call him, Dr. C, and Mr. Kaiser recently just performed in the tournament. All teams did an outstanding job.
The middle school teams placed seventh and eleventh. The Artemis team made it to the playoffs but was a few points short of victory. They ended up winning the motivation award, but Wilmington High School had been crowned the winners.
Also, the STEM fair held on March 25th will have a robotics wing where they can show off some of the amazing things they've built this year. The Future Scientists and Engineers of America, or FSEA, program run by Mr. Kaiser takes place every Friday. It has been going very well so far. All members are partaking in individual projects. In this club, multiple students are working on different projects. Some include mini rocket launchers, egg drops, and so much more.
In performing arts run by Ms. Printeville, the drama club has recently just finished performing their show of The Musical Descendants at WHS. Descendants was a huge success with two of three shows being sold out.
In Ms. Printeville's eighth grade chorus class, a small group of students got to sing at the Providence Bruins game. I got to participate in both of these events, and they were both so much fun. I got to make so many friends, and it was a great experience.
Next, the students that partake in the strings program taught by Ms. Perkins are currently in preparation for their performance in May. Students in the band taught by Mr. Farrar are currently also taking place their concert on May 8th. The Best Buddies Program run by Ms. O'Keefe has just finished making Valentines for Project Valentine.
They are currently in preparation for the Special Olympics, which takes place May 2nd. They were there creating posters for the thrilling event to support, to show support for everyone participating in the Special Olympics.
The math team run by Ms. O'Leary recently just competed the first half of their first calculator meet competition virtually.
The second half is coming up shortly. Members of the team will soon be getting T-shirts in the spirit of the team.
The World Culture Club that takes place after school is run by Ms. DiStefano. Members recently learned about the Lunar New Year in January.
There was also recently a parent volunteer who came as a guest visitor to speak about Lebanese culture. Soon, they will be learning about carnivals-
Or Carnavale.
Around the world.
In Ms. Gill, in Ms. Wolf's art club, members used their creativity and artistic minds to complete two sets of Valentine's Day crafts in spirit of the month of February. Ms. Gill has also been putting a tremendous amount of effort creating this year's yearbook. This yearbook's theme, 2020, it's 25 years. It is currently a work in progress. A preview into this is that there will be teacher's school photos included from their time in eighth grade.
Next, No Place for Hate. No Place for Hate is a school-wide student-driven program that is designed to help improve our school culture by improving inclusion and allyship, and by addressing bias, bullying, and enhance a culture of respect in our school. I am a No Place for Hate student leader, so I can personally vouch for what a great program this is. During the No Place for Hate meetings, we have come up with lots of ways to help improve our school's inclusion. Some of these include the No Place for Hate social media account, our Change for Change Penny War event that will happen sometime in the future, the Humans at WMS, which is when some of the No Place for Hate student leaders interview students around the school, so they can talk about their experiences and positive change they would like to see in the school. Next, in the advisory classes, Ms. Simmons, DeSanto, and Forcina had organized a Black History Month quilts that classmates collectively worked on together. These quilts were then hung up in the hallways and around the school building.
Project 351 is run by Ms. Curtis. Our ambassador for Wilmington is-
Eliana Goldstein.
That's me. On launch day, ambassadors working against clothing and security at a workshop in Crayl's de Crayons. It was a great learning experience for all the student representative ambassadors who attended.
There are many upcoming events and past events that took place here at Wilmington Middle School. The eighth grade Valentine's Day dance has just recently passed on Thursday, February 13th.
On Thursday, February 27th-
Which is tomorrow.
Parents can meet with administration for coffee. There are two sessions open for nine in the morning and in the evening at six o'clock.
On March 5th, there will be course selections for the high school with Mr. Miranda.
On March 6th, parent-teacher conferences will also be held.
The seventh grade dance will be held on March 20th.
On March 21st, 15 eighth grade students that have been selected by Misty will be attending a student leadership conference at Essex Agricultural Vocational School in Danvers. The selected students will be participating in three individual workshops. Project Explorer is also coming up, which gives the seventh grade students an opportunity to visit the Shawshank Texas to see all the classes, workshops, and opportunities the school has to offer. It is a three-week-long program that takes place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. About 100 students signed up for this program. Thank you for listening.
And roll cats.
Great job.
Questions?
Wait, don't go.
One second. I want to say thank you so much for coming. I love to hear you're so involved, the two of you. I really am excited about the No Place for Hate program. I think there's a lot of stuff online that I think is important to combat in school. One particular kind of aspect that I want to ask you about is like people online who say a lot of things that are cruel or biased towards women and girls. Do you encounter any other students in this campaign that have reflected those kind of behaviors online? Like, how much of a problem would you say that is?
Yeah, it's definitely a really big problem, and that's why we have the Humans for WMS, which is where we're going to like interview the other students so they can talk about their personal experiences. And I think that is going to be brought up because it is so important and it does happen. But I think it's also good that we have our, like, we're posting the interviews of Humans WMS on the social media account. So I think there's good that there's going to be positive going on the internet that's coming out of that, too.
Cool. I'll look forward to it.
Can you tell us the social media account? Is it Instagram?
Oh, yeah.
Anyone join it?
Uh, yeah, it's Instagram, and I think the username is WMS underscore no place for, with like a four, hate.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That was very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So much. Great job.
All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, February 12th, 2025. Grants 24, or excuse me, warrants, grants 24 and 25, revolving 46, 47, 48, locals 70 through 74, food service 44 through 47, circuit breaker 18, special education 40 through 43, and payroll, February 26th, 2025. Is there a motion? Mr. Simaha, second, Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? Unanimous. You look like you have a question.
I guess point of approach. I was at that one, right? I was at the, I thought that should be abstaining.
Correct. Thank you for asking, though.
I was just like, oh, should I double-check really quickly? I was like, oh, shoot.
All right. So we had discussed before a little bit, but we're gonna, if it's okay with the committee, move the superintendent's report to the end of the agenda, or at least partly to the end of the agenda to give Dr. Brand a little bit of time. So that will bring us to public comment. Anybody like to make public comment? Okay. Very good. Then that brings us to new business. This is the first reading of Policy AC, nondiscrimination and harassment. So the policy subcommittee met recently, and, keep me honest, based on, I think, guidance from the new administration, council recommended that we take Policy AC, which we reviewed and approved in the earlier part of the year, and remove pregnancy-related condition. So this policy remains as it was updated recently with one minor correction, right?
I believe that is accurate.
That's what we said.
That's a, that's a good summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, the current, the 2020 Title IX regulations were enjoined by a federal court, and then the Department of Education has indicated that they're going to be reverting to the prior Title IX regulations. And so likewise, we're essentially reverting to the prior Title IX, which is actually not that different from in our, at the policy level. There's some different procedures, but at the policy level, just removing the pregnancy-related conditions was all we needed to do to be in compliance.
Thank you. That's a better explanation than what I provided.
Always just give it to David for policies.
I really should. I really should. Does anybody have any questions for David about this?
Mr. Chair threw you into Mr. Rags. No, what in this case was pregnancy-related condition describing? Because I don't know.
Direct abortion.
I mean, it's just language that is no longer, the whole point is it wasn't describing anything in particular, but the, this is, so this is all about essentially like nondiscrimination and harassment and so forth, and it just wasn't part of the, the new regulation, like the pregnancy-related language. It wasn't spelled out.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Just the way I understood, took that as opposed to the other was that it's postpartum. For example, would be a pregnancy-related condition that is not pregnancy.
Yeah. I was assuming as much on that front. I was just curious if there's anything else.
Other questions, comments, thoughts? We will bring this back next time for a second read and, and approval. Thank you. That concludes new business. Moving to old business. The first item under old business is an update on the superintendent search. Dr. Bryson, do you want to start?
Um, no, sure. I'll start. Sure. So we, as you saw, that has been posted. So, and there's a flyer, and it has been posted pretty widely. You had asked us to go ahead and get that out as quickly as possible, so we worked with Andrea and Dr. Brand to do that. I then also reached out to Nezdeck and Jesse reached out to MAS-C to come back with some information for you regarding the support of a search firm. And it looks like, do you want to talk quickly about MAS-C, and then I'm going to just try and find that email?
Sure. Yeah, so MAS-C provided sort of a, essentially like a broad summary of the services they provide, and I can certainly share that with you guys. They, it's a sort of a one-time blanket fee that my understanding was whether it was sort of an abridged search for an interim superintendent or a full search for a permanent superintendent, that it would be the same, the same cost. They do offer some complimentary services that they would do free of charge, some direct mail outreach, things like that, but their offerings for what they would provide for a, an interim search and a permanent search are essentially the same thing, essentially cost the same amount of money. So we can certainly get some more detail, but I just, it felt like for purposes of what we were looking at as far as an interim superintendent, that it might not be in our best interest to pursue going with MAS-C, so.
And the cost was somewhere between 18-
Yeah, it was, it was up, thank you. It was upwards towards $20,000, so.
And so, just so we can think and compare, Nezdeck has a post, they post the position as $4,500 just for that piece, which I found to be wild. With the posting, they would collect all the applications, organize them, and then send them. So it's posting, but then it's also, so, and that part is already sort of moving, right? And Andrea is able to sort of organize all of those pieces. If we are looking for a consultant, they would be happy to build us a proposal. So the scope of work would be to work with the school committee liaison, develop a timeline, support the development, which we already have actually. There's a few things we may or may not need. Support, the development of a screening committee, assist in creating a schedule and final interview schedule, reach out to applicants for both screening interviews and final interviews. They'd help us to develop some questions, some visioning, although in my conversation with him, he was sort of like, some of it would be preliminary to the full superintended search, but it would certainly be helpful as you start to think through what people are looking for. But given our timeline, we are trying to move this somewhat quickly, so we have someone sort of ready to begin for July 1. And this could be accomplished through several in-person meetings and trainings for the screening committee and school committee. The cost range, he said, would be somewhere between $4,500 and $5,500 for all of that. So comparatively, I feel like it's a sort of like an interim solution to having some additional consulting support, but not the full range. We discussed quickly what it would look like if we were then to move into sort of the full one for next year, and they said it would, obviously, we'd get to know one another, they would get to know what we were looking for, so it would streamline some of those pieces, but that would obviously be a separate contract. So I was sort of like, can we just roll on in?
And I just, before we move on, I want to correct what I said. I went back through this. It, for MAS-C, the cost was a little bit less than what I had recalled. It's $11,500 as a flat rate fee, so roughly double what Nezdeck is talking about, but better than what my recollection of it was. So, yeah. Questions? So, Mr. Simaha, if anyone was first.
I thought I saw you pointing at me. That's why I said, sorry.
Mr. Simaha.
So I guess, I guess my question is, and Paul, I don't know if you can answer, like, where does this money, like, where does this money come from in the, in the budget?
We have to find it. It's not like we didn't budget anything for this, but, you know, 5,000, we can find.
Okay. Oh, that was my question.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
So actually, there's two pieces to that. One, in terms of Nezdeck, and, two questions, rather. In terms of Nezdeck, our schedule says application deadline, March 21st, interviews the fourth, the first through the third of April. Is there enough time for them? I mean, I don't know how busy they are. Do they have availability that, in that particular timeline, or are they otherwise, they could, they could be ready that soon to work with us?
Can I answer that?
Please.
So yes, they think they do have availability, but I would obviously need to confirm that with them if we decided to go that direction.
And then the other piece of that is presuming that we, things would go very, very well, and we do have somebody ready earlier, let's say June 1st, so we have a month of overlap or even June 15th, whatever it would be. That is a budget question as well, because their contract would start on whatever date that was, and potentially we have the impact of having the superintendent's salary and the interims for at least some period of overlap, potentially. The only off that I would think is in the next year's budget, presumably there's some, some other pieces that move. So is it, is it something we've contemplated, the salary of an interim? Because that would be potentially another measurable number, we'll say, for a few weeks to month of June? Is that something we can, we can, we can get to between now and then?
Yeah, we'd have to. I mean, it's not like this was budgeted, but we just, you know, that's my job.
Okay. Well, it's yours.
So, and, but, so not to put you on the spot, but I know we'd, we'd need to find it, certainly, but no, like, major concerns or, oh, look.
Depending on the, the dollar amount, but.
Yeah, all right. Good?
I'm good, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Golden, thank you. I just wanted to go back to what you were saying with regard to kind of potentially setting up, getting into the full search with Nezdeck, right? Like, if we hired someone now as a consultant, they might be better poised or better positioned to assist in a permanent search. Is that what you were getting at, or am I mischaracterizing?
Well, they would, I mean, it would serve both, right? So they would get to know us a little bit better and what we were looking for, and we would get to know the consultant. I did say, if we have, we do this and we had a consultant, could we potentially stay with, if it were a good match, could we potentially stay with that same consultant into the full? And if it weren't a good match, could we obviously switch? But if it were, then I think it's sort of, it probably saves a little bit of time and just that getting to know you, right, at the beginning of, of the next phase. So I could see there being some positives to that, you know? I don't, like, I personally don't think it's completely necessary, but I hear, I feel somewhat, I feel pretty confident that we can manage this sort of within, within our group and with, and with Andrea's support. I would, regardless of what we all decide tonight, I would suggest all of us appointing or sort of providing your, like, thoughts on who might serve as a co-chair. So if Andrea were sort of overseeing all of this, I do think there should be a school committee member in that position right alongside. One, I think it's important that there's someone from the school committee seeing all that stuff coming in and sorting through it. Ultimately, this is our, this is something we're going to have to do. So I don't want to be on kind of like, not involved in all of those pieces and then have it just come to us sitting here one night with three final candidates. That seems to be not the greatest thing. I also think for the community, it's pretty important for them to know that school committee is very involved in this process, and we're 100% engaged in it. I'm happy to serve in that role, although I'm not like, please, please let it be me, but I am happy to do that if people were comfortable with that. But I do think that's, we definitely, whatever we decide with Nezdeck or MAS-C, I do think we, regardless, we should do something like that.
Yeah, and I think, sort of going off of that, I think, yes, it makes great sense to have somebody from this committee sort of co-chair that effort. And, you know, I look at, it's a different comparison, but, you know, when the Wildwood Committee using, was it Lee Door, who did the high school and sort of is familiar with the community, Nezdeck did the search for Dr. Brand, and they kind of, you know, so getting somebody in, getting comfortable, sort of keeping that continuity in that process, I, I find appealing. So, but certainly want to hear. Mr. Rags.
100% agree that school committee member should be part of the leadership in co-chairing or chairing the search committee. Hiring the superintendent is one of the core responsibilities of the school committee. So this is, this is our job, and we need to have representation at every stage of this process, guiding, guiding the entire process. Regarding, well, so MAS-C, it basically like that they'll don't, they won't do the bespoke, the bespoke contract. So I think we clearly, I won't say clearly, I don't think we should be spending $11,000, which there isn't really time, I mean, it's a full package. We don't have time, I think, for like the full process of what that would be. So that doesn't make any sense. Now, we could, of course, avail ourselves of their consulting, their general consulting services as being a member of MAS-C, but I, I have the feeling that that's not going to be too much. Again, it's, you kind of get what you pay for. So sure, you can always call up Glenn Kuchar and just bend his ear, and, you know, he'll let you know what he thinks, but it's not the same thing as having a consultant who's actually like working hand and glove on the, on the, on the search itself. So, so I think, to me, it's just a question of, you know, do we feel confident enough doing this ourselves, or do we think that it's in the best interest of the, you know, of the district and the committee's work to, to do this arrangement with Nezdeck, and whether we think that in the timeframe we have, that we'll get enough benefit from, you know, from that consulting relationship to make it, to make it worthwhile.
Mr. Turner.
So remind me, I don't remember if we discussed this last meeting or not. Obviously, when we do the, the full search, we will have a working group that will do the, including parents and, and staff and us-
Yep.
To do the, to, to go through the candidates after initial screening, and then narrow it down to the three and all these sorts of things. For the interim, were we planning on having a group beyond Andrea and one person? Yes. So it would potentially be two or three of us on the group, but one would be the co-chair to work with Andrea at the, is that the?
Correct. Well, there would be a screening committee.
Yes.
And that's, we had originally discussed keeping it smaller than we would for the full, so instead of 18 to 20 people, probably somewhere between eight and 10 people, which would include a range, right, of, of people across the community. I would say if there's a school committee member serving as a co-chair or chair, I'd probably say one other school committee member would be appropriate. I'm not sure I'd have three and then have five, so you want to try and balance it a little bit. But we could discuss that. I mean, we could all decide as we get there.
I think the recommendation was one to two.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll say that I'm very much in favor of, of the co-chair arrangement as described, and two members on the screening committee makes sense. I also think that it would be worthy, worth it to start now with a relationship with Nezdeck to, to kind of get everything in gear and have that kind of extra voice. It reminds me kind of going back to the Wildwood School Building Committee of kind of how SMMA is there to be the kind of project manager or that third voice, but Dr. Brand has been the chair of that, of that committee so far. I do think that having a fresh pair of eyes at the very beginning of this is really important, you know, we're a $50 million odd corporation, so to speak. And I just think once in a while, you do want kind of a, a different perspective that is not related to any of the players on the field and can say, hey, you're missing out on that, or you're underrating that. So having that person as a resource who then can help us maybe be the same person for the permanent search, I think there's a lot of value there. So.
Thank you. Dr. McCauley? Not to push you on the spot, but-
No, if you're asking for my opinion, it's similar things that have been said here. I agree to go with Nezdeck, if I'm getting that right. My view is on them is that amount, that fee, it buys down risk for us, because if, let's say, we don't get good candidates coming in through just the, putting the requisition out there-
Sure.
We're going to be in a tough spot.
Yeah.
So I think we definitely need to get a firm that has good contacts, good network, that can really get us good candidates and hopefully fill that role as quickly as possible. So, thank you. Agreed with that. Also agree with the proposal for the co-chair approach as well, too.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, Mr. Turner?
Question. Do we need a motion to nominate a co-chair?
Yeah, I mean, I think-
Or do we want to wait for another meeting to do that?
No, I mean, I feel like if the committee is, is at a comfortable place, I would suggest multiple. I would appoint a co-chair, and I would also, you know, motion to approve working with Nezdeck, just because it's going to have a financial impact. So, Mr. Rags.
Well, I was just going to sort of ask of the committee, is there a second member who is interested in serving on the screening committee, on the search committee? All right. So, all right, so I'm going to make a motion that-
Please.
We appoint Dr. Bryson chair of the screening committee and Mr. Turner as the school committee's second representative. Why don't we actually start, why don't we start?
Why don't we do that one first?
Stop there. I'll break, we'll break this up, so we don't have like a mega motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Simaha, is there discussion on the motion? All in favor of appointing Dr. Bryson as the co-chair of the screening committee with Mr. Turner as the other school committee member? That is unanimous. Thank you. Would you like to make a second motion, David?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, please.
You make this contingent on the fact that they are definitely available to work within our timeline. So I don't, I'll still need to, once we decide this, I'm still going to need to talk with them, and if they say sorry, then we're going to have to come in.
All right, so I'll make a motion that pending successful contract negotiations with, with Nezdeck, that we enter into a contractual relationship with Nezdeck for consulting on the interim superintendent search.
Excellent. Is there a second? Mr. Golden, is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Simaha?
Should, should we attach the, the price tag to that as well, or that's, I mean, that's their-
An upper limit.
I mean, I'm just asking the question.
That's a good question. Paul, any thoughts?
How about attaching an upper limit?
Yeah, just to the motion, so not to exceed.
Yeah, I mean.
Good point.
I mean, he wrote the cost range 4,500 to 5,500, so.
So would we amend the motion not to exceed 5,500?
Sure. How about, how about I, I will move to amend the motion, and I'll just say not to exceed $6,000?
Wrong. Yes. Great. A second thing, amendment to the motion, or the most amended thing. All those in favor of the amended motion to work with Nezdeck in an amount not to exceed $6,000 pending successful negotiations? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
That's voting on the amendment. Now we have to vote on-
Now we have to vote on whether we are okay with-
I thought-
No, we had to vote on the amendment first. Now we're voting to do it. So, all those in favor?
Yes.
Also unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry for the runaround. I appreciate that. I'm going to bring us back to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand has joined us.
Oh.
Let me see if I can- I have a question.
Please.
I think, did the requisition get post, got posted this week? I think, did the requisition get post, got posted this week? Is that right?
Yes.
For the superintendent?
Posted earlier this week.
Have we received any applicants yet?
I, I don't know.
I'm not the chair yet. I wasn't the chair, so I'll let you know. Now that I've been knighted.
Give him the gavel.
Now that I've been knighted.
Just a request, just to, if we can, just email updates.
Be empowered.
And then we can give the public an update on our next meeting.
You got it, will do.
Yep, thank you.
Result. Dr. Brand, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Score.
Thank you.
Do you wanna tell the committee the final outcome or would you like me to share the news?
Uh...
You know you want to, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, thank you for your flexibility, uh, the opportunity to join the observer up in my high school, my daughter's high school game today and I'd say that somebody else with the last name Brand, although not a doctor, did score the winning goals.
Oh!
Congratulations.
That's great. Wow.
Thank you, thank you for that. So just to clarify, Jesse, where are we moving on to, is it old business for the calendar or the superintendent's report?
That's, actually, that's a great point. Let's start with the calendar, I forgot all about that. Yes, let's stay on old business and do the updated draft of the 25-26 school year calendar. Thank you.
Alright, um, thank you. So in the packet, you will see a couple of documents that continue the conversation for the consideration of the school committee in selecting a calendar for the 25-26 school year. There are four versions, not to try and make things more complicated, but four versions in the packet that provide a framework for the possibilities that are currently, we think, being considered and capture those options. You'll also see in the packet, uh, the survey results from the staff relative to the last conversation we had and the interest by the school committee to reach out to staff, to gather their sense on a couple of variables, if you will, regarding the calendar. Just fairly briefly, if you take a look at those survey results, the, the key questions were in order. The day before Thanksgiving holiday, was there a preference from the staff's point of view, a perspective on whether or not that Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving be a half day or a full day off, no school? So half day, school in session, more of the traditional approach that a few years ago the district followed, but then for the past few years, with the exception of this year, you'll know that we had the Wednesday off. You can see the results from the staff there in that pie graph, just under 65% of the staff, based upon 330 responses, indicated a preference for that Wednesday before Thanksgiving to be an early dismissal day. Just under 30% were in favor of that Wednesday being a no school day. The next, the next consideration has to do with winter break. The, the, the Christmas holiday falling on Thursday, December 25th, will be brought into question whether or not we would hold school in session on Monday, the 21st, and Tuesday, the 22nd. Typically, the 24th is, is, is a day of no school. We, we reached that first staff feedback and you can see from their, their results respectively, that almost, 73% were of a preference to have the 22nd and the 23rd off as no school days. What that would lead to is essentially two full weeks of no school based upon when the New Year's Day holiday falls. The next area of interest the school committee expressed was a sense of Good Friday, and that next year falls on April the 3rd, Friday, April the 3rd. That question was also posed to staff and you can see just under 75% would be inclined, would not be necessarily inclined to take that day off in the event of the holiday. 25% would be. There are a couple of other points on the second page and to sort of capture some of the other thoughts around staff's survey feedback, but that captures where we sort of left the conversation around where staff's perspective fell. So I'll pod there if you, if you might have any questions on that and then certainly the, the hope is that with discussion this evening, the school committee would be inclined to finalize a version of the calendar for the next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Turner?
So with regard to Good Friday, if a quarter of our staff were to take the day off, and other districts may also have need for substitutes that same day, what is the likelihood we could possibly find the staff to run the school if we needed to fill, give or take 80 to 100 teachers? Is that, is, I mean, that's, that seems like a really high ask to try and get that many substitutes to come in on a day that some substitutes may not want to work either.
Yeah, I think, I think it's certainly an understandable question. First off, we don't know with these 330, how many were educators versus other staff positions. That's only to say that not necessarily would everyone who were responding to the survey require a substitute. That said, undoubtedly, it would be a very large number and it would be a management challenge. There's, there's no question about that. That certainly brings in a question, not just Good Friday, but, you know, some of the other staff responses around, and, and I think that this is becoming more problematic as districts approach, you know, the calendar in differently. Some of the responses we saw, you know, some of the staff may live in another community, they may be following a different calendar, and, and that may be a primary caregiver and childcare is a problem for them. So this gets more complicated, I think, as we move forward, not just Good Friday, but the other days. But there's no question, that would be a challenge, that would be a large number of staff and presumably a, a high quantity of substitutes. Could we do it? Could we manage it? You know, I, I couldn't tell you that we've operated with 25% of our teachers away before. I, I would have to go and look at the data, we didn't take a look at that, but either way, you kind of, that's a large number of staff away, for sure.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, thoughts, observations? Dr. McCauley?
How are we going to approach voting on this? Cause we have four versions.
Well, I would say if there's a clear consensus, then if not, perhaps it makes sense to try to narrow it down to two and make some adjustments or, I mean, there's, what, three? I think three of these have the full two weeks for the winter break and one of them has the two days in school, so, you know, there's, there are different combinations of different things. So I think we need to just sort of try to find a consensus.
Sure. I guess maybe people can give their opinions or do that, do it that way, maybe?
Sure, yeah. Let's finish with questions.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Ragsdale and then Mr. Samaha?
I, I'm still out of these options in favor of option one and for the basics, still same reason that I think that, I think that having the entire two weeks off is, is just too much. I think it pushes us too late. I think it's too much of a burden on working parents who need to suddenly potentially scramble for additional childcare or take additional days off themselves that they might not have been planning to in a time when they already might be burning up a bunch of time off over the, over those weeks. And in, over the la, since the last meeting, you know, when I've been coming in contact with parents, I've been trying to just kind of take the temperature and, and just, just of this basic idea of just like, should those first two days be, be school days or be off? Should we be off for the entire two weeks? My informal polling has indicated support for that option as well. And, and so I, to me, that is the, the option that I would be prepared to support.
Thank you. Mr. Samaha?
I, as I look at these calendars, if you look at this, the staff survey results, it would be version three would sort of fit all of them. I agree with Mr. Turner. I think that about the 25%, I think that's too much. I think that's too many people. So I think whichever calendar we decide to go with, I think we should go with having the April 3rd, the Good Friday off, cause I think that would, I think that's unfair to ask the schools to try to operate with a quarter of the people out.
Sure.
So, you know, I, I, and I've gone back and forth on really, I, I mean, I think that the day before Thanksgiving, I think as an early release day makes sense. So Good Friday, early release before Thanksgiving, and the 22nd and 23rd of December, as a teacher, I would want the, I want the 22nd and I would want the 22nd and the 23rd off, but the boss of public schools is not asking me if I want those days off. But I, I can, I can see, you know, Mr. Ragsdale's, Mr. Ragsdale's point too about that could be a, you know, that increases childcare issues for, for some families. So I, I think as long as we can stay with the 3, April 3rd off and the early release before Thanksgiving, I could probably be persuaded either way on the 22nd, 23rd.
Well, and it's interesting that you say that, right? Because if we look at the staff survey results, it's what, 73% favor those two days off and the informal poll that I think the apple did is almost the same ratio but for having school those days. So it's just, it's just interesting how it kind of breaks down. Mr. Turner?
So, so two things. One, I, I think we can remove option four, just if we're trying to narrow our, our discussion down. I will say the, the interesting point about the, the day before Thanksgiving is the teachers matched my household almost perfectly with me being the one person in favor of not having school that day or having a full day as opposed to having the half day. And I was thoroughly outvoted there and the teachers are pretty clearly aligned with the rest of the household. So I think we can remove option four. And I, I say that in jest, but it, it's pretty clear and consistent that, that having that as a half day seems to go back to what people are most comfortable with. I, I do think that option two with having the third off is problematic. So I do come down to the first or the third options and it is a little bit interesting that, 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 the, there's a strong argument in favor of both of those two. So, but I, I, I believe we could remove four and, and two and get down to a, a shortlist that way. I don't know if others agree with that or not.
Dr. Bryson?
Yeah, I think I agree with that. I don't know how we survey the staff and have them say 75% want the 22nd and 20, we don't do that. So part of me is just like, when I saw that result, I was like, okay. Yes, I saw the informal one on Facebook. Thank you, Robert, for that. Clearly, it was the opposite, right? So, I mean, it is tricky, but we did not do an official survey. So I think it's still, it's a little complicated, but it doesn't put us too far in June. It's, we're still June 15th with no snow days. I mean, that's really early. I was inclined to actually remove the 3rd of April as a day. And I, I'm a little worried that other districts are gonna do their calendar and actually remove that this coming year because of the 22, 23, and we're gonna say, oh, now they're doing it too, but it does, looking at the other districts that have that day off, it does put us in a tricky spot. So I'd say to play it safe, I'd probably still take, I'd probably still keep the 3rd, which puts me on version three.
Thank you.
I guess I'll say my opinion. I, I like version one. I think for a lot of reasons that Mr. Ragsdale stated, I feel just two weeks off for kids is too long. And then it does put a burden a lot on working parents and everything like that. Also, when you look at the backend, the last day is Thursday, the 11th. So if we have one snow day, that'll be the 12th, and we need more snow days to go into the next week. If you do look at version three, if we have no snow days, we're asking everyone to come back for a half day on Monday, which could be a little awkward potentially, too. So I agree with keeping Good Friday just for historical reasons right now. You know, it's something we've always done, we can do it anyway. I've always found it odd in Massachusetts, we don't have days off around Easter. You know, since I'm not from here, I know Patriot's Day is the whole thing and stuff, but usually spring break was tied to Easter in other parts of the country. So I feel having a day off around Easter is probably a good thing, you know? So, yeah, I'd be in favor of version one.
Thank you. I, I will say, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Golden. I, personally, I favor version one. I like having those two days before the winter break and getting out a little earlier. At the end, however, I shared Dr. Bryson's sentiments that we surveyed the staff, we went sort of out of our way to put this on to a, you know, another meeting so we could survey the staff. And then there's, there's a part of me that says, well, there's a clear, clear favor, favorite to, to, to not be, to not be in school those days. And so to just outright disregard that, just I, I'm struggling with that one, but... Mr. Golden?
Thank you. Yeah, when we talked about this last time, obviously, I was, I was really kind of interested in and, and positive towards the idea of, of having those full two weeks. But I do think it's hard to ignore the fact that, or the manner in which it was such an overwhelming response from the local public about thinking that's a bad idea. But I am receptive to what you're both saying, that, you know, we, we did go out of our way to poll the teachers, but I do think at the same time, like, the version one would have that half day on Thanksgiving, which was also popular among the survey teachers, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, it, it, as a practice, I'm, I'm interested kind of in whether we should even do this in the, in the future? Like, it's, I wonder if other districts survey folks on what, what times they take off? But I think it's pretty clear that, that especially Dr. Brand doing the research for us with regard to the towns around us and the districts around us, how we'd be like the only town that didn't, that did go to school on Good Friday, which is kind of interesting. So, yeah, I do think that we kind of have to, I was probably being personally like slightly too naive with regard to thinking it would just be all hunky-dory to be two weeks out of school. So right now, I'm leaning towards version one, but I do think that has wins for teachers and for parents, so.
Just one more comment, no, just thinking about that comment, one of the teachers or a few of the teachers made about, would it be possible if we were to go with version one essentially, to do a half day on the 23rd? Which I wonder if it's a little bit of a compromise. It's not a full day, they still, right, so I'm, you don't like that idea? I'm just saying, that's a...
It doesn't like half days.
Wouldn't it?
It's a compromise. If we, if, so basically, if I don't, you don't vote the way I'm voting, then I don't know if we should just do version one as is. I wonder if we should then say, does it make sense to have a half day? I just think that's a lot of pressure for people to have a full day the day before Christmas Eve, doesn't feel... And the staff clearly said, we want those two days. So I don't know. So I'm really, really torn on that one.
And I think, and version one and version three have Good Friday off and a half day before Thanksgiving, right? So we are essentially, it's those two days before the winter break that are the, the sort of sticking spot. Mr. Golden, you had your hand up.
I was gonna say, I really like what Dr. Bryson just proposed, because I do think that there's, but I do think that, yeah, like that half day is, is a classic kind of Solomon-esque, well, maybe that's the right, wrong metaphor. But, no, I do think that that kind of helps people get into the holiday season with a little bit more ease and it shows paying attention or trying to respect kind of the teacher's response here while also making it a little bit easier than having two straight weeks off for work stuff.
And taking into account the unofficial survey on Facebook of parents.
Of course, that's the micros.
One thing I just wanna point out about, about surveys that you always have to be a little bit careful about is, all we did was ask here for a preference. It basically just said, like, between these two options, which would you prefer? And it doesn't, so the results we get don't necessarily measure the strength of the preference. And if we, I mean, I think if we had just approved a calendar last, you know, in the last meeting and just said, this is when we're doing it, Tuesday and Monday off, like, I don't think people would be up in arms and think that it's unreasonable. It's like, obviously, if you ask them what they think and what they want, they'll tell you what they would prefer. But I, I don't want to, I don't know, I, I wanna, I guess, to thread the needle a little bit because I'm not just saying that we just ignore the results of surveys if it's maybe not something that we prefer, because then what was the point of asking in the first place? But I think you also have to be careful about kind of overinterpreting what the, you know, what the survey necessarily means. And just like, you give people an option, you say what you prefer, you get a preference, but I think in the end, that's, it's one piece of data that we take into account. We didn't ask them to consider everything that we're thinking about in the entire calendar holistically. We asked them a very narrow question, we got a result, but we need to kind of put it into context with, with everything we're trying to do with the calendar.
Mr. Samaha?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna try to add one other sort of angle to this that would favor version three over version one is, when you're thinking, just from a teacher, and again, I, I teach high school, so I don't necessarily know what it would be like. I never taught elementary school.
never taught elementary school. But like, I know when you're, when you're sort of planning out and you've got sort of a unit going, you know, ending on a Friday sometimes can be a good day to end sort of an instructional unit. And then having those two days, it's kind of like, okay, so what am I gonna, what are we gonna do? What am I gonna really get done in those two days? I gotta extend what I was doing before. It just makes it like a little more complicated. So sometimes it can be a little bit cleaner to end it on a Friday. Not saying that teachers aren't able to do it on the 22nd and 23rd, but that might be one reason why some teachers might prefer to end on a Friday versus those two days. I'm just gonna offer that as a perspective if anybody is concerned about, is concerned about that, so.
Mr. Turner?
I appreciate the thought of your, your compromise proposal, Dr. Bryson. But I'm not in favor of half days, full, full stop, for anything other than, you know, teacher conferences or the last day of school. So if we were to go with version one, I would prefer not to make that a half day. I understand the logic of it. But again, it goes into the circular argument about if it's a half day, then why bother going? Because people say, oh, it's a half day because it's the last day before vacation. So we're not gonna do a lot. So if we're not gonna do a lot, then why go at all? So that's where, and that's the same thing I said about November, and clearly, I was wrong. But I would apply the same logic and perhaps be wrong again on the 23rd of December. So I would, I would certainly prefer version one as is or version three as is. I lean towards version three in part because of the educational pieces of how teachers manage things. It happens to be convenient that the teachers are aligned with that. But yes, clearly, some of the parents weren't as in favor of it. So I can see merit in either one or three, for sure.
Well, we've clearly eliminated two options. We're back to, we're back, we're back to one and three. Yes, Dr. Bryson, you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve version three of the 25, 26 school calendar.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Samaha. Discussion.
Yeah, I think I'll just say one more time that I think that pushing ourselves out into that third week of June is something that we want to be really careful about. If we get, you know, hammered with snow or heat or E. coli days, as the district has
We've seen.
In the, in the past, in the past couple of years, then also with Juneteenth coming up, getting pushed onto the final day in option three. None, you know, obviously not the most likely thing that would happen based on the last couple of years, but something also to, to consider. That it's, you know, no one can predict the future, but there's a reason that we build those days into the school calendar so that we have, you know, a realistic look at where we might end up, depending how the winter goes.
Okay. Others? Okay. With that, all those in favor of option number three as the school calendar for the 25, 26 school year?
Four.
It's four of us. Opposed? All right. So Dr. McCauley, Mr. Golden, Mr. Ragdell opposed. So that carries. Thank you. Get that, Trace? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brand. That's, that's, that's the school calendar. Well, that's, that's the first read. We will have to bring that back. Next time, to officially approve it. But we have our preferred draft. And so with that...
I'll give you sugar again.
Dr. Brand, we'll bring you back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And two items of business tonight under the report. Both have names that accompany them in the packet, and I'll go in order. First, a brief update on the Wildwood MSBA project. There are lots of, there's lots of activity that continues, of course, with this project. But one of the more notable ones is the recent selection of what is called a construction manager at risk. As I, in the memo, CMR has more commonly been referred to recently as, as a specific facet in sort of designing and construction, constructing buildings such as this. My understanding is there's CMR at risk in place for the high school project some 12, 15 years ago. As I highlighted in the memo, sort of briefly, what that role does includes really a support for the owner, that is the town, and another layer of operational sort of support and protection. It includes a heightened review of construction drawings and designs, another very important set of eyes on scheduling and budget, all obviously very important in terms of any kind of project. As noted, the School Building Committee recently approved Fontaine Brothers as a selected, as a selected firm from four other firms that were more comprehensively interviewed. This is a firm that has done an awful lot of work in Massachusetts, not just for public schools, but a lot of public schools, 120 in fact. And so this, all four firms were very, very good firms, but Fontaine Brothers emerged through the public bidding process. And so I just wanted to make sure that the school committee is aware of that development. We are moving forward with plans for another community forum that has now been scheduled for Monday, March the 31st at 6 o'clock. Broad notification has not yet gone out, but as we hit the 1st of March, we'll certainly start to do that. That forum is going to be held in the large group instruction, instruction room. This is forum number six since we formally started this project. The ongoing commitment to try and make sure that members of our community have the opportunity to learn more about this exciting and important project. And then finally, our efforts continue around trying to make sure that our stakeholders are informed about the developments that are taking place. Work is underway on two more expansive informational videos. One with Nisselle, Mr. Lord, and our three elementary school principals who are directly connected to this project and myself. We're working on putting together an informational video that's going to be shared with all staff throughout the district on the CIT day that's scheduled mid-March. We just think it's really important that not just the staff that potentially will be impacted by this project, but our entire district staff are well aware of the work that is underway that's associated with this project. And the other informational video that work will soon begin on is one aimed more specifically at the community at large, similar to the one that we had last town meeting almost a year ago. And that will also be an important PR piece as we, as we go into the end of the school year and certainly through the summer to try and make sure that members of our community have the opportunity to really learn and improve on the budget and plan for the project. So that's an update on the Wildwood MSBA project. I'll pause there to see if there are any questions from members of the committee.
Questions from members of the committee. Dr. McCauley?
Yep, thank you. I have a few, a little bit unrelated to the memo, but to the MSBA project as a whole. I was wondering if we have a, maybe an update on, first question, and then I have a second one, but I want to pause after the first one. What's the succession plan for Dr. Brand? Has that been talked about in these subcommittee meetings? Is there a plan in place for this? Because, you know, he is chairing the committee. He's leaving us soon. I feel this is very important, so.
Dr. Brand, do you want to start?
Just to clarify, Dr. McCauley was breaking up a little bit. Was that a question around my status as chair? Is that correct?
Yeah, who will be replacing you as chair?
Right. The, the replacement of you as chair now that you're gonna be leaving us, right? Exactly.
It's not something that has, has formally begun in terms of discussions. It is something that the School Building Committee will certainly have to make a decision on. At the inception of this project, although smaller at the time, the School Building Committee is the deciding body on, on a lot of matters relative to this project, as you know. And that includes the selection of the chair. So it's not something that's been discussed. It's certainly something that is on my mind. I, as I've shared with others before, I certainly welcome the opportunity to serve in this role. It made, I think, sense for me to follow sort of suit for the approach that the town had taken in the last project with the then superintendent serving as the chair. But as I've shared with some, I just, I, it wouldn't be something that I would think would be the ideal situation for either an interim or a new superintendent when, when that person, he or she comes into the role. I have the opportunity to know the district and know the community, but it's, it's certainly, it's a, it's a heavy load. So it's a discussion that we'll have to ensue. My intention was to begin that discussion with the town manager in the near future and, and then start more broadly as a School Building Committee to have, to have that discussion. But all that being said, it's certainly my full intention to continue in this role as the chair truly until the end of June and the time of my departure from the district.
Mr. Ragdell?
Just adding on, a little bit on to that, that there have certainly been discussions behind the scenes, you know, starting, but nothing formal at the building committee level yet. But it's absolutely recognized that this is something we need to get in place and have strong leadership to take over that position. And again, widespread agreement that the new superintendent is not the appropriate person for that role.
Yeah.
So these, these discussions are happening sort of again in the background right now. And will, you know, be brought out into, you know, formal public meetings soon.
Okay, great.
And you had a second question?
I did, yeah. So I did see recently, the select board said that the town, the town vote, there's gonna be a town meeting on a Saturday morning in September, I believe Saturday, the 13th. I was wondering, what are the thoughts of the subcommittee around approaching potential voter turnout? Because I feel this could be a major challenge, especially for parents, because there's a lot of youth sports activities that take place Saturday mornings in September.
Mr. Brand, I'm having trouble hearing Dr. McCauley. Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, this question?
Sure. So there's, it, the, correct me if I'm wrong. The question is sort of around how we are going to approach the town meeting for the school vote as far as sort of parent turnout and youth sports and kind of...
Yeah. There, there's a, there's a lot of conflicts with a Saturday morning town meeting vote. I can see it being very challenging for parents to dedicate three to four hours for the town meeting vote on a Saturday morning.
Yeah. So, and, and thank you. That's, so two things on this. One, I have begun work on, I've begun outreach to, and I've talked to already a few individuals that I've come to learn that have sort of important roles on, on, on the boards, the respective sport governing boards, whether it be soccer or youth soccer as such, to bring to their attention the fact that this is happening. And that it would be wonderful to try and request respectfully their adjustment for scheduling, say to move games to the afternoon with the anticipation that this town meeting will take, you know, a better part of the morning. I've also started work on a letter that I, that I intend to send as both the superintendent and the chair of the School Building Committee to all known local sports boards and formal organizations to make that same request. I know the number of those, you know, sort of entities, but very happy to take the thoughts of the committee and anybody else for who would be best to notify for that. I've also sent a letter to the town manager. This was a few weeks back, maybe more now. Just with, the town manager certainly is well aware of this date, but the respect to try and work with Parks and Recreation as well, to be mindful of this and to try and not create sort of internal conflicts of the type that you're, that you're, you're speaking of. So it, work has begun, but work needs to continue certainly. It's, I'm well aware that scheduling is starting now for the exact things that you're talking about. And so to be creative, try and get ahead of it, it would, I know, be in the project's best interest.
Okay, great. No, thank you. I'm glad to hear the subcommittee's being proactive with that, because that was one concern that I had with us, was making sure we can give parents space to come and vote if they choose to, you know.
Thank you. And quickly following up on that, if I could, have there been or will there be conversations around childcare? I know there had been, it had been offered in the past, and there was a meeting where there wasn't enough interest to, to necessarily make it feasible. So is that a conversation as well?
Absolutely. It's, at least to my knowledge, at the high school level, not something that has begun yet. But it will again, as I think most of the committee knows. Our, you know, we certainly try, when I say we, I mean, not me, not, in fact, I mean, Miss Ingersoll plays a role, but that's really helped supporting those at the high school level to work to try and get student volunteers, of which usually there are those, and there's community service hours that students are often looking for. But we're really at the mercy of trying to, to do, to do things, trying to attract students who are available and interested. And two, and it usually falls to getting a volunteer from our terror staff as an adult or adults to be on site to supervise. So it's a bit of a lift, that's for sure. We know it's the right thing to try and do. I wish there was another organization in town, say Parks and Rec could help support us. I've not come to learn of that, but, so we'll continue to try and do that. I'm confident that we'll be able to provide some level of opportunity for families in September. We'll have to try and organize that before school lets out with, you know, freshmen, you know, through juniors, those that we know will be back in fall.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
To follow on to Dr. McCauley's point, I very much appreciate the outreach to in-town sports leagues. We can't, we can't get to everyone. I understand that as well. But part of the challenge we'll have with a Saturday morning is all the travel leagues. And so there will be, it is a challenging timeframe. And I know it's hard to find a good time and date for the entire town. I mean, we don't, we don't typically have a four-hour or six-hour block that we're all available suddenly. But it is, it is challenging to have it on a Saturday morning, for sure. And if memory serves, the high school was on a weeknight. When we voted on that, it was in the high school gym on a weeknight, I thought. Or was I thinking of something else?
It was a Saturday.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate the, a long time ago. Thank you.
Other questions or comments about the Wildwood slash MSBA? Mr. Ragdell?
Just a quick comment on the subject of the memo, the selection of the, the CMR. Just to put this in the timeframe of, of kind of what steps comes next, the most important thing that the construction manager does is help us lock in the budget. So they're gonna work hand in hand with Doran Whittier to really figure out and estimate the budget of this project. Because at the end of April, we're going in front of the MSBA with our package, and, you know, we need to get that approved. And once we do, that's the budget for this project. So they are really like going over everything right now, you know, both kind of, you know, projecting the cost of, you know, of everything from the labor to the raw materials and working to come up with the budget estimate of this project that, that we will take to the MSBA and then have to live with forever after.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Brand, I think that's good on the MSBA.
Sure, sure. Actually, just one final point, though, on that. I should have said at the outset, but just so members of the committee know, you know that we have weekly meetings with, we've called it the leadership group, Paul and I, town manager representation, Doran Whittier, and SMMA. I should have pointed out that the CMR at risk for this project, Fontaine Brothers, is now also joining that team. We met with them for the first time on Tuesday. So I share that to say sort of the confidence is now this project has three professional firms, Doran Whittier, SMMA, and now Fontaine Brothers, that are all at the table and will be going forward, including these leadership group meetings. So really, you know, there should be the confidence of the committee that this project is really in great hands and, and surrounded by professionals that are gonna help guide the work. So it's really a good thing. The second item on the superintendent's report tonight is that of Mr. Roggerio, our assistant superintendent of administration and finance. And boy, talk about an institution, talk about our knowledge, another case in point of an example just a moment ago. But it is with mixed emotions, I'm sure by many, that as noted, Mr. Roggerio has decided to hang it up, or at least partially hang it up in November of 2025. And after a very long, very successful and very impactful career here in the Wilmington Public Schools in the town of Wilmington, after 17 years, Paul is looking to retirement and to join his wife, who also soon will retire, and chase grandkids around and do whatever retired couples will soon do. So, you know, a paragraph can't even begin to extend appreciation to Mr. Roggerio and all that he has brought to this community. My pleasure and good fortune to not only work with him, but also come to learn firsthand that, really, the leader that he has been for this community, the school committee, and for all of those before the members who are in the seats that you are, and certainly the town admirers. But, you know, consistent with who he is as a, as a professional and as a gentleman, his decision to notify the committee and myself as a superintendent, what he did, and as you note, that was just before the winter break, before my situation unfolded. Again, just in my opinion, is a testament to who he is. It gives us an absolutely, I think, a tremendous opportunity to center on a search for his... replacement, his successor, but also take full advantage of having that person in place to learn from Paul, to work closely with Paul, and really get up to speed before he formally steps down from his role, which, not an exact date, but sometime towards the mid or latter part of November. With all of that said, I sent out a proposed search timeline. Andrea and I have been working on this and with Paul to get a posting set to go. She has that ready to go. That will go out the end of, the end of this week, and you can see the rest of the dates there. I will say that I, unlike the superintendent position where, as the discussion has ensued, you know, sort of unfortunately, it's thought to be a little bit too late to set out on full search for superintendent of schools, that's not the case for a position like Paul. That wouldn't be a case for a position of a principal, I would say. And so it's the intention to move swiftly, but, you know, in a measured way through the search process that will, if we were able to follow this, conclude mid-May. That position does well to have somebody start in the summer, whether that's in July or even in early August, and have a good, good amount of time to work and cross train with Paul to get up to speed. This is a position that does fall to the appointing authority of the school committee. There are a handful of those, not a lot, but a handful, and certainly though this is one of them. And so to that end, not only would you at the conclusion of the search be asked to recommend and approve the appointment of somebody as a successor for Mr. Rogero, but also, as you note there, my thought to have, if possible, and I know every single member of this committee is very, very busy with a lot of things, but if there might be one or perhaps two members in the school committee who would be, who would be willing to join that search committee, that would be wonderful. I don't want to put you on the spot tonight. If you think you might have interest in, certainly, that would be great, and you could signal that tonight, but if you have to wait for the dates exactly for when this would take place, that would be totally understandable. So I'll pause there and certainly happy to take any questions on the intent for searching for replacement for Mr. Rogero.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Questions, comments? Paul, do you want to start? Do you want to say anything?
No, I'm not going anywhere yet. No, I, yeah, I gave it a lot of thought and so forth, and it'll be 17 and a half years I've been in this district. I've loved it. I appreciate all the support, collaboration, everything with the current school committee members, the prior school committee members, prior superintendents in the town. I've always tried to do my best in thinking of what's best for the town from my seat, but, so I want to thank all of, again, all of you for the support, and I'll still be around for a bit, so.
We will, we are going to draw out the appreciation for the next several months, but I will say, you know, we all have been fortunate to work with you and those that came before us. And so, you know, just a huge thank you. It doesn't suffice, but for everything you've done for the district, it's appreciated and it's going to be real big shoes to fill. So I would suggest think very hard about who wants to potentially help on this committee. I won't put anybody on the spot right now, but, you know, it's an important position and getting the right person to fill it is going to be a challenge, so we're going to make sure we do it right. So, Mr. Turner?
One quick point. I do want to come back to the district side of it, but I think it speaks volumes, that every time the town has needed leadership, Paul has stepped forward. The search committee for our town manager included Paul. All of these cases across the town consistently, Paul has been requested on that side as well to take part. And so the appreciation is not just from people in this room or in these buildings, it's across the entire town. And I think that really speaks highly to your almost 18 years in this town. And so we can't thank you enough, and I don't think the town of Wilmington will ever thank you enough either, so.
Thanks, great point. Mr. Exel.
I don't want to comment on this agenda item, because that means admitting it's real, not just a terrible typo that somehow made its way into the school committee packet.
Yeah.
But I am also extremely grateful, and not just for all your years of service, Paul, but for, as Dr. Brand was saying, for the runway that we have to fill your, you know, position and then to still have you around, kind of, you know, guiding and training this new person, so that, you know, if we can't continue to have Paul Rogero, at least we will have someone who is Rogero trained. And that's, I think, the next best thing that we can ask for. And so thank you for, you know, planning this in such a way that it's going to kind of, you know, ease the pathway to your successor.
Who's going to train the school committee members now? Dr. McColdy?
Yeah, so just to start off, I just want to thank Paul a lot for all your service. I know I'm relatively new compared to other people here, but one accomplishment I've seen that really is behind the scenes, that a lot of people don't appreciate, is if you look at other districts and all the financial problems and budget shortfalls they've been having, Wilmington has not had that. And I think that speaks a lot of volumes to all the work that you've done here and all the leadership you've had, and we really do appreciate you for all of that. So thank you for everything that you've done. So the other thing was, I would like to just understand what the effort would entail to be on that committee. I may be interested, but I just kind of want to know what the time commitment's like, what everything entails.
So Dr. Brand, do you, I don't know if you heard the question, Dr. McColdy is looking for a bit more detail on sort of the timeline and the time commitment and what the search might entail. Is that information that you can provide now or perhaps an update at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, and thanks for helping, I think, you know, it will really depend on the number of candidates we have in the pool and those that would be identified to interview. So I do think that depending on which committee members who might have an interest in this, if there's flexibility in personal work schedules, which I know that holds true for some of you, but not all of you, then that certainly could be a factor, could lead to try and tackle some of these interviews through the day as well, too. So it's hard to say, as is typically the case, we don't go to sort of into this necessarily to identify how many candidates we would interview. That would be hard to know, but if we can do them through the day, or at least partial day, so the afternoon and the evening, I really don't think it would be any more than two different dates, two separate dates to be a part of this search committee. You know, it might be two, you know, two, four hours, two, three hours, but we'd like to try and condense it as much as possible, to the degree that people, you know, their own calendar can help support that. But, you know, I can work, I will work with Andrea, we've been mapping out, I started today with Ms. Ingersoll, mapping out even available days that we have, where we don't have negotiations happening or a building committee happening, there's lots of intersections. So I can, I can certainly identify, I think, the dates that these would likely be held soon and forward those to the committee, and that may be helpful for you making, you know, a decision in terms of if you can help out.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I guess I'll say, Paul, you know, thank you as well. I think I'm consistently amazed at, no matter like what kind of gets thrown at you, you're like, yeah, I'll do it, I'll make it work, you know? And I just think that that speaks volumes to, like, not only to your ability, but just to your flexibility and your patience, I think, especially with us as a committee, too, with the questions that we sometimes ask, that there's a lot of really complicated budgetary things that I know when I started on the committee, like, I was so confused by so many different things. You know, and you did a very nice job of being able, being patient and explaining it. So I appreciate that. And I think just for the, for the committee, I think it's also important to understand that this, this position is, you know, almost, or almost or as important as a superintendent is. So, you know, thank you for giving us so much time to, to really find somebody who can, you know, maybe be, you know, kind of as good as you, maybe, if we're lucky. But, you know, I just think it's a really important position, and I agree with what Mr. Turner said, too, about the town side of things, too. I think that's really important, and I, and I know that whoever the candidate is, I think that we're going to be wanting to look for somebody who can do, who can fill that, that role as well, not just know and be able to do the budget, but be able to have all of those inter, you know, inter-agency skills, too. So, so thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I'll say, I've only known you for coming up on a year, Paul, because I've only been on the committee for coming up on a year, but I'll say, like, in a time like this where I think there's a lot of people who call into question the merit or worth of public service, you are like the consummate public servant for, like, in government and showing what good government can do. So I just want to say I admire you for that a lot. And with regard to the search committee, if Dr. McColdy doesn't want to do it, because, and I really hope he does, because I have a lot of things, I do have a lot of flexibility even still, so, you know, if someone else, if we can't find anyone else, you can always throw me at it. But noted.
I hope Mike can do it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You know, I want to say, I'm not going to say, I'm just going to...
You're not going to mirror your colleagues?
I'm not going to mirror my colleagues, because I don't like when people do that. There I am. And we have a lot more time to celebrate you, but the one piece that wasn't said, and I so respect everything that people mentioned, but the one thing that I always think about with our relationship with you is the trust and just that, like, and I know that takes time, but there's just, there's this trust that we have in the work that you do, and I just think we've been very, very lucky in that way, and that will take time to build, but whatever that secret is, where we walk away feeling like it's always in good hands and you're just so transparent, so honest, and just a wonderful colleague to all of us. So there'll be plenty more time to celebrate you, but that's just, I couldn't be left out of the, of the Paul, yeah.
I think Paul would like us to stop celebrating now. I mean, honestly, to that, to that point, go to an MASCE conference and sit on a budget panel and listen to the horror stories from other districts and just note that, like, how lucky we have been for the last 18 years. So we will continue to celebrate you, Paul, and I know you're going to hate it, but thank you. It's unfortunate, we are thrilled for you, we are sad for us, but thank you for everything you've done, so. With that, Dr. Brand, anything else?
All well said. Thank you, everyone.
Very good. All right. That concludes the superintendent's report, which brings us back to the end of the agenda. Subcommittee reports. Policy Subcommittee is meeting later this week. Expect some exciting stuff at our next meeting. Tomorrow is later this week. Thank you, Mr. Samaha.
I don't have anything about a subcommittee, but I just want to clarify the calendar piece of this, so that anybody who's listening, if they didn't understand what was happening...
Sure.
And maybe to clarify so that I understand exactly what's happening. No, this is for other people, not for me. The way I understand it is that that was sort of a preliminary vote, and that was just a first read of that calendar. So we did not tonight, tonight we did not approve a calendar.
We did not.
That will happen on the 12th.
Yes, we put forward a recommended calendar that will come back at our next meeting to be officially approved or not, but that is the idea.
Okay, just making sure that everybody is aware of that's what happened.
Thank you for clarifying for those at home. Yes.
That's a great clarification. And then just to clarify just a bit more, it's called a first read, right? And so it looked like we had a first read last time, but then we asked for more information so that then when there's too many new additions, it's considered still a first read. So it will come back and it will be a second read, it'll be under consent agenda, but it could not pass, in which case we'd have to go back to the drawing board. So don't mark up your calendars yet, public or teachers, because it does still need to come back and be fully approved. So that's a really good point, and you're absolutely right, because it probably would have been all over Facebook tonight that this was the calendar and that is not the case. So, thank you.
Are there other subcommittee reports? Dr. McColdy?
Yeah, just a quick update. Mr. Golden and I were invited to have a meeting with Senator Feingold sometime in March, so we're just trying to hammer out a couple of dates with his staff and everything. So we'll let you know once that's scheduled.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you for doing that.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Mr. Exel?
Just a quick update that the cell phone policy working group met recently and was mostly focused on putting together the surveys that are shortly going to be sent out to the district. So staff, student and family, community surveys will be going out soon, so people should keep, keep an eye out for that.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Dr. McColdy.
I don't know if this is out of order, but could I ask Mr. Ragsdale, has there been any movement on the state level with that? Because I think there's concurrent efforts.
There is some activity, mostly at the Attorney General's office, so the Attorney General has floated some potential legislation, but I think more concretely for our purposes, she published within the last, I think, month or so, essentially a toolkit for this, for this issue of kind of like cell phones during the school day, which contains model policies as well as, you know, community guidelines, and it's about a 27-page document that is kind of like just right on point for the work that we were doing in the, in this working group. So that's kind of the, where most of the state action has been recently.
And to follow on to that, I think what would be really important for that working group is, no matter what the state does, it'll be mostly the what, and even if they give us the what, the how could come out of that working group and help us implement however they might come down, and if they don't, we obviously can make our own steps first. But I think the work of that subcommittee working group is still phenomenally important to getting goodbye into whatever we might have to choose to do or be told to do in the long run with cell phones. So I really appreciate all the time and effort that's being put into those surveys and being put into that work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other subcommittee reports?
I have a point of information.
Please.
After the next election, we're going to reseat some committees?
Yes. Yeah, so generally what we've done is not the first meeting after the election, but the second meeting, we do reorg, so we do chair, vice chair, secretary and subcommittees at that second meeting after the election.
Thank you.
The last two times we broke it up are three times.
Yeah, we did, we did reorg.
The officers, the first meeting after and the second meeting after, you guys did subcommittees.
That's right. Yes.
Dr. Branson?
Mr. Golden, I don't think you can sign up for more subcommittees. I think you might be full, actually.
I was going through the list, I was like, I'm on the sick leave back subcommittee. And it tells you, and I was like, you know what? That's what I was, my, the reason for my question was, I think I need to be on fewer things.
First-year excitement. We've all been there. We know what it's like.
All right. Correspondence this evening.
None this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Future school committee dates and other notable items. March 5th, 2025 is the Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, hybrid, 6:30 p.m. March 12th, our next regular school committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. God bless you.
March 25th, the Wildwood School Building Committee is meeting, hybrid, 6:30 p.m. March 26th, the school committee is meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. And on March 31st, we have the Wildwood Elementary School Community Forum, number six, at 6:00 p.m. here in this room, followed by the Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, hybrid, at 7:00 p.m. Mr. Turner?
As we learned tonight, the STEM Fair will be, which is a phenomenal event for all ages, but particularly aimed at the middle school level, will be at the middle school on March 25th at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Golden?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Samaha, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Dr. Brand, congratulations. Thank you for joining us. We will see you next time.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.